We're going to have a work session. Do we need to call the roll for that?
Yes, sir.
So would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Hammack?
Here.
Councilmember Hockes?
Here.
Councilmember Meisner?
Yeah.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith, absent. Mayor Troutman?
Here. I understand the work session is to talk about TIF.
Yeah, it's to talk about urban renewal and tax increment financing and, you know, the role it plays in both revitalizing a community and from an economic development standpoint. And I'm going to hand it over to Cory to kind of go through those details and what that looks like.
Good evening. So I know a lot of folks come into a presentation like this with a PowerPoint presentation and a lot of slides, but what I don't want to do is have this discussion be perceived as selling urban renewal. What I wanted to do was sort of have a discussion about what it is, what it isn't, answer any questions, and then if as a result of tonight's discussion there is a desire to get more information and more specifics, we can certainly have a more flashy presentation. But in my experience, there is a great deal of information about this. There's also frankly, a great deal of misinformation. And so I thought it was better to have a conversation about it, talk about what it is and what it isn't, and see where we go from there. But I'm going to tell you, I have a bias. I represent several urban renewal authorities. My guess is I've probably litigated as much urban renewal law as anyone in the state, for better for worse, I think just by virtue of luck or a lack of luck, depending on your perspective. So this is an area that, for better for worse, I'm pretty familiar with. And I'm also familiar with how it's changed in the last several years because it has. You have a detailed memo from me on 11 pages worth of legalese on what the steps are. That's not what I want to talk about. I mean, that you can refer to, and it is the nuts and bolts of how to do this if we want to do it. But what I want to talk about is some of the main ideas of what this would look like and what it is. So first of all, in Colorado, we have this unfortunate term. It's called blight. And when you use that term and you talk about property being blighted, many of your private property owners immediately think that is offensive, think it is something it isn't because that's the terminology that Colorado law uses. In order to have an urban renewal area, property needs to be found to be blighted. But what does that mean? I mean, I think we think of downtown Chicago or downtown Detroit. But under Colorado law, blight can mean things like having roads that don't make sense. It can mean having title that's not marketable. It can mean having environmental contamination on sites. It can mean having issues related to development that make it so that property can't develop without some sort of assistance. So there are 11 factors that can be considered for blight. You need only find four of them in order to satisfy the criteria for creating an urban renewal area. I say that, and I'm probably not telling you the full story, because if the city council wanted to authorize condemnation by an urban renewal authority, you would have to have five factors of blight. Frankly, in today's environment, my recommendation is that you don't authorize condemnation. I think while the tool can be an important one, in my experience, it's not a valuable tool in the urban renewal context to have the condemnation tool where you can take someone's property. But if you do want that tool in your urban renewal plan, then it requires an additional factor of blight. It requires five factors.
So Cory, on that... So for condemnation to happen, there would have to be an authority, an urban renewal authority, that they come to the council and say, "We want to condemn this property." Is that how that works?
So the way urban renewal works is that the city council adopts an urban renewal plan and creates an urban renewal authority. The plan dictates whether condemnation is authorized and requires an additional step in front of the city council to condemn property. But the city council can decide, as part of its initial creation of a plan, not to authorize condemnation in the first instance. So you never get to that point. And at least in my experience, when the condemnation tool is discussed, a lot of the value of urban renewal gets lost because you're spending so much time talking about taking property that you're not talking about redeveloping the property and wherever the urban renewal area is. But that is ultimately a policy decision. But what I just described is the difference between what an urban renewal authority does and what a city council does. So the city council adopts the plan. The urban renewal authority implements the plan of the city council. So the urban renewal authority carries out whatever the plan document is that's approved by the city council. If the city council decides to do urban renewal, one of the first things it has to decide is, do you want to be the urban renewal authority? Or do you want to have a separate board be the urban renewal authority? And in what we refer to as the post 1348 world, which is the world we live in, and when I say the post 1348 world, in 2015, there was a House bill that changed urban renewal law significantly, House Bill 1348. So when we talk about urban renewal authorities, whether it is another board or it's the city council, it is that board plus three. And the plus three is a board member from the school district, a representative of the county, picked by the county, that may or may not be a commissioner, it does not need to be, and then a representative picked by all of the special districts within the urban renewal area. Amongst themselves, they pick one special district representative who must be a member of one of the boards of a special district.
So let's say one of these entities is, or whatever, what if they're not interested? Then we can't move forward?
You can move forward. So what you do is you send out a letter, for example, to the Title 32 district saying, "We have created an urban renewal authority. There is a spot on the board for a representative from all of the Title 32 districts. Please let us know who your selection is." If there's no selection, the spot remains vacant.
Okay.
But you still have the ability to have that urban renewal authority. And that is actually fairly common. So pros and cons in terms of having the City Council Act or a separate board. And again, I represent both. I represent some communities where the city council acts as the urban renewal authority, and I represent some where it's a separate board. It is a question in many respects of accountability. And I say that without value because some city councils want their urban renewal authority to be able to act and not have to worry about politics. And so they want a separate board that implements the urban renewal plan and doesn't have to worry that how they act as an urban renewal board will affect their reelection. On the other hand, some city councils want that accountability. They say, "We need to be one in the same. We need to be held accountable whether or not it's required by law. And because it's our plan, we want to be the board that implements it." And again, it's a different, both work, both are effective. It is a value judgment, if you will, for your constituents about how best it works in this community. What is unique about urban renewal authorities, and I know this council has had discussions in the past about downtown development authorities. The most fundamental difference between a downtown development authority and an urban renewal authority is a downtown development authority imposes its own mill levy. It is a taxing entity. So on your tax bill, you actually can see a mill that goes to your downtown development authority. Urban renewal authorities do not impose any property tax, zero. Why is that important? Because it means urban renewal authorities are not subject to tabor. Therefore, if an urban renewal authority wants to issue debt, whether it is going to a bank to get a loan, or whether it is doing a bond issue, it doesn't go to the electors because you're not subject to tabor. And the security for urban renewal debt is tax increment that is generated by urban renewal. So what's tax increment? Because again, this is one of those myths that I think is out there. An urban renewal authority gets the increment, the increase in property tax caused by new development. So absent urban renewal, if there is no development, there's zero. There's no increase in the mill, in the value of property generated by the mill levy. So if my property is worth $100,000 and it's subject to 70 mills, whatever that 70 mills generates, if the property remains at $100,000, that 70 mills is going to generate the same amount of property tax. The basics of urban renewal are if there is new building permits for development, whether it be new construction or rehabilitation, that would not have occurred but for urban renewal, the increment goes to the urban renewal authority. So for my $100,000 property, if as a result of urban renewal, I do a redevelopment of a property and the value goes up to $120,000, the mill levy created by that $20,000 goes to the urban renewal authority. All the other taxing entities keep the mills generated by the other $100,000, the original $100,000. And that $100,000 is not frozen over time, which many believe. That $100,000 is what's referred to as your base. Every two years, there's what's known as a biennial reassessment. All the properties are revalued. If the entire Canyon City area goes up, let's say 5%, then what was previously $100,000 goes up to $105,000. That's your new base. So all of the taxing entities, the county, the sanitation district, the fire district, their base goes up. But the value above the base is the increment. And that is the food, the dollars, that an urban renewal authority use. That's what's known as tax increment. That is property tax increment. And so property tax increment is generated for 25 years. That is the maximum. An urban renewal authority can live forever. An urban renewal plan area can live forever, but tax increment is only generated for 25 years. So if you are looking to finance a project within an urban renewal area, what people in the business do is they say, "Okay, if this amount of development occurs because of urban renewal over 25 years, the plan area is going to generate X amount of property tax increment, and that's what we can bond against." That's the security for the bond. Caitlin, you had a question?
I just wanted to make sure I understood this right. So it's only property tax? So it's not sales tax, it's not any other type of tax that is the tax increment financing?
The city can authorize in its urban renewal plan, sales tax increment generated by city sales tax.
Okay.
If there is a county sales tax, it can't include that, but it can, it need not, but it can authorize sales tax increment. And it's the same basic premise. If the base, if you have a vacant property, the sales tax base would be zero.
Right.
And any sales tax generated could be increment. If you have an undervalued sales tax generating property, anything above the base could be sales tax. Some communities like to include sales tax increment in their urban renewal. Frankly, some like to do it from the general fund. It's a policy question. The only difference is that the sales tax increment can be a multi-year obligation. If it is general fund sales tax, it is by definition subject to annual appropriation. So typically, you can't bond against sales tax that is general fund sales tax, but you can bond against sales tax increment.
I got a question for you. You mentioned that, you know, $100,000, then you go up 5% over. Is that a one-time jump and it stays there for the 25, or can it jump again?
It jumps every two years. It can jump. So what happens is the base goes up to the same level as the rest of the larger area, not just the urban renewal area. So whatever area the assessor looks at is sort of the area that goes up. So if the entire Fremont County area goes up 5%, then the base would generally go up 5%. If the entire area remains stagnant, that there is no increase, then the base will remain the same. But the base doesn't remain the same as the value grows countywide. Ashley?
So when we were looking at downtown development authority, we were looking at tax increment and increase, or the TIF, the sales tax. And I was calling to different communities. And so a lot of them, well, at least some of them during the downturn of the economy, they made nothing off of that increment increase. What, do you see a difference by doing with property tax instead?
Yeah, so I actually represent the Casa Rock Downtown Development Authority, which is one of the communities that had exactly that happen. We made up a term, and it is made up, it is not in the law, called decrement, because the idea that it goes down instead up. What generates property tax increase is building permits issued for renovation, rehabilitation, new construction, and there's other categories that generate value. Even in a flat market, with property tax, if there is new development, increment will be generated. So there is much less risk to what I call decrement because you may be at zero, but you won't go down. Does that answer your question?
So another question I have is, what would be the intended use of the increment that is gathered?
So an urban renewal area is created to do an urban renewal project. The language in the Urban Renewal Act is terrible because when you and I talk about what an urban renewal project is, we think of one, the St. Cloud Hotel, for example. But frankly, under the Urban Renewal Act, and there's a whole area in my memo about it, that's not the definition of a project. The definition of a project is the entire urban renewal area. So if you have, let's say, a Main Street urban renewal area, and I'm going to just use the St. Cloud Hotel as an example, and the city, the urban renewal authority wanted to look at the St. Cloud Hotel, that is one undertaking or activity in a larger project area. And so typically, if there is an urban renewal development that is going to receive some sort of increment, you would have a redevelopment agreement, some sort of public finance agreement that says, "We will provide X amount of the increment to your development." And you typically figure out what is eligible to be funded by increment. Increment can be used on things other than public improvements. It can be used on frankly, anything that remediates blight. So can you use it on facade? Absolutely. Can you use it on utilities? Could you do it on a fixture that could then be taken out of the property and moved somewhere else? No. But if it's something, I mean, I've seen it used on murals. I've seen it used on facades for an entire block. I think the myth is it's used for demolition and redevelopment. That is one form of urban renewal, but certainly not the only one. It can be as small as a facade improvement, as large as redeveloping an entire block, and anywhere in between.
Like some have used it for like parking garages?
Yes.
Could it be other infrastructure too that supports the community?
Most definitely.
Isn't the state legislature kind of cracking down on tax increments or URAs and things like that? It's getting tightened.
I think the state legislature with 1348 and then a bill called Senate Bill 279 that happened after it, there was no urban renewal legislation this session, except for urban renewal legislation that was sponsored by CML to address a case that came out of the city of Glendale that just provides that you give notice to landowners of whether their property is blighted or not, that you give notice either way. I believe that the urban renewal legislation is largely done because there's now a mechanism in place where all of the taxing entities get an opportunity to negotiate with the city about the allocation of TIF. It has been rare that there have been arguments about misuse of TIF. What has been more common is this idea that the impacts caused by new development in urban renewal area are not, that other taxing entities are being disproportionately impacted. The best example I can give, fire districts don't have fees for services like sanitation districts have, for example. So if you add an assisted living facility on what was previously vacant land, I'm going to suggest to you, there's a pretty significant impact on emergency services provider because where you previously had no contacts, you're going to have an assisted living facility that probably has more. And the urban renewal law previously did not require negotiation with that fire district to address impacts. Now the urban renewal law would require you to negotiate on those impacts.
So that means that, because I've heard, I guess maybe that myth before in the DDA conversations, that the schools, the county, the fire districts fight against it and necessarily don't support it.
So in the post 1348 world, it is absolutely important to try to get cooperation from your taxing entities. If you can reach an agreement with them at the front end on whether or not there's an allocation of TIF, that benefits everybody. I think you reach out before, not during the process, and talk about what the city would want to accomplish with urban renewal. And I think each taxing entity is different. What the statute contemplates is you have to talk to every taxing entity. You have to talk about whether or not you can reach an agreement. If you can't, then there is a mediation process. And so from beginning to end, if you are unable to reach an agreement, it could take as much as a year. But I would encourage that if there is a way to reach out to the taxing entities at the front end and assess impacts, it's better to have that agreement at the front end. So for example, you look at the county services, the services the county provides, sheriff, district attorney, social services, assessor, all of the types of services the county provides. If there are impacts caused by whatever the proposed urban renewal plan is, you want to allocate TIF to them. The argument frankly, with counties is a difficult one because often they don't have a direct service impact within urban renewal areas. Yet counties still believe that they are being harmed because they're not getting their mill levies on the $120,000 in my example, they're only getting it on the $100. And so that is where the negotiation occurs. Since House Bill 1348, there may be more, but I'm aware of two mediations that have happened where the taxing entities couldn't get along or couldn't reach an agreement. One was in Leadville, where I was selected as one of the mediators, and that was between the city of Leadville and the sanitation district. So I'm really familiar with that one. And then there is one going on right now in Fort Collins, between the city of Fort Collins and the Fort Collins School District. So it happens. But as it relates to the school district, if you're talking about the downtown area, for example, I'm going to suggest to you that it's a good discussion to have with the school district where there will probably be very little impact. And practically speaking, there is a backfill mechanism at the state level where school districts are made whole. So unless you're adding students, in most cases, school districts are willing to work with urban renewal authorities because they see that the total value that they get, even with the increased base, goes up. It is typically more difficult with fire districts for the reasons I've discussed. But it depends on the improvement. Let's take the St. Cloud Hotel, for example. And again, it's just a hypothetical, but you have an old building that I would suggest probably has fire code issues. I'm going to guess. After redevelopment, is it probably going to be a sprinkled building that has less impact on the fire district? I think there's a good argument for that. So unlike the assisted living facility, a lot of commercial redevelopment may actually create less fire issues and less calls. So that's some of the conversation you have to have with your taxing entities. And oftentimes, governments just decide to agree to disagree on whether there are actual impacts and decide that they want to allocate the TIF anyway. Part of that analysis is finding out how much money there is to actually provide incentives for redevelopment. Because frankly, if you give 50 or 75% of the TIF to every taxing entity, there's not going to be any increment left for the redevelopment projects that you're looking for to eliminate the blight. And there are a boatload of urban renewal consultants that you can work with that will do the pro formas, that will do the projections to say, "This is how much it's going to be generated from all of the mills." And so the increment is generated from all of the property tax mills. It's all of the taxing districts. And you can project how much over that 25-year timeframe in an area it's going to generate. There's different types of agreements. You can reward success. And what I mean by that is if there is public improvements that need to be constructed by a private property owner, you can reimburse them over time based on increment that their property generates to reimburse that, those public improvements. If you have a development that's just going to put together a pole barn for storage and you'd like a more permanent structure, the difference in cost between the pole barn that had been contemplated and a more permanent structure that's going to look better can also be reimbursed by urban renewal. Using your example, Ashley, if you want to build a public improvement, if you want to widen a roadway, build medians, build parking structures, that can be funded by urban renewal dollars. It can be shared. The city could decide to partner with the urban renewal authority and have 50% general fund dollars and 50% urban renewal to build a parking structure, for example. So there's a whole bunch of flexibility related to how urban renewal acts within an urban renewal area.
So with that, using that example, let's
So with that, using that example, let's say we decide to move forward on the Highway fifty access plan to the east. Could that be used in conjunction with, with the CDOT funds that are available?
It could be. It could be. So one of the, kind of circling back to the, to how urban renewal begins, you kind of have to look at areas you believe are blighted. And as we talked about, blight is in the eye of the beholder, but it can be all the factors and it may be bad fat, bad traffic patterns. It may be historic structures that need to be rehabilitated in the downtown area. It may be the Riverwalk area. And it, you can look at kind of geographically discreet areas and have a consultant look at those areas and, and evaluate the conditions. It's called a blight study. And you can do multiple blight studies to determine if the areas are qualified for urban renewal. And so Ryan and I were talking briefly before the meeting and knowing just enough to be dangerous, I could see three potential areas. There may be more that could be combined. But you have your downtown corridor, you have the Riverwalk, and maybe you have East And you would have a consultant look at them and say, what factors exist out, out there? And that's the blight study. And so the consultant, you would give notice to the property owners that their property is being studied for whether or not it should be in an urban renewal area. I can't emphasize enough how important I think it is to do the education at the front end. If I get a notice in the paper from the government telling me that my property is being looked at for whether it's blighted, and I don't know what that means, I'm going to show up here and be really upset. And so having the education at the front end about what it means, what incentives might be available in that urban renewal area if property is blighted, and having them be part of the process at the front end. But, so the consultant studies the areas and creates what's called a blight study. And they will come in and say, here is our analysis, here is the blight conditions within the larger area, not, so let's, I said you needed four conditions. If you have a larger area, not every property needs to experience every condition. So it is the area as a whole. And, I mean frankly, I, when I drive into Canyon City and you see the, the way that the highway is, operates, I can tell you there are traffic issues and I can tell you that that is one blight condition, that just observing it, driving in, is easy. I can tell you that as you look at how the properties lay out on the highway, that's a second blight condition. I mean, just looking at it as you come in, it's the type of things that historically might make development difficult that actually qualify as conditions of blight. But you have to go through the process of studying it. And it is a politically, can be a politically charged process, but I, but I think if you reach out at the front end to the private property owners and to the other governmental entities and are inclusive about it, it makes it less so. And it's more about trying to figure out how to lift everyone up. Because again, one of the myths of urban renewal is that urban renewal is limited to the urban renewal area. What do I mean by that? Let's say you have Main Street is your urban renewal area. And let's say it is a huge success and you see properties that are doing facade improvements, the city is doing roadway improvements, increment is being generated, you have, every night, the roads are packed with new tourists enjoying Main Street. I'm going to guarantee that one block over and one block over, those properties are going to increase in value as well, that the impacts of urban renewal are going to bleed over to the neighboring properties. And all of the taxing entities enjoy all of the dollars that are basically across the boundary from the urban renewal area. And so that's why the statute says you're supposed to draw the boundaries of an urban renewal area as narrow as feasible. What does that mean? It means that you have to decide what makes sense for a planned area. There is some artificiality to that, you're going to study it. You don't have to include everything in the area, even if it's all blighted. You can decide that there are areas that make more sense than less. Amanda?
So if we draw our lines on an area that we want to work on, it goes really well, work is completed, and we want to move to a different area, does a whole, do you have to go through a little process over again, or can you just kind of redraw those lines somewhere else?
So you only have to go through the process of creating an urban renewal authority once, which is the petitioning, it's a petition signed by twenty-five electors. But in terms of the blight study, each time you create an urban renewal area, you have to do a separate blight study. But there's nothing stopping you from doing two or three at the same time.
Okay.
And in fact, many communities do exactly that. If they're going to go through this entire process, why go through the pain multiple times and, and look at it and do it once? And there is economies of scale in looking at it that way. And you also have a better baseline. Because if your consultant is looking at the entire city and comparing areas to each other, you're going to have one set of eyes looking at sort of what the baseline is in, in Canyon. And it, it makes it for probably a more efficient study. Any questions before I?
I just had one. It says the funds must be, but funds are necessary for preparation and review of the blight studies must be available. Do we have those funds available?
You would have to find that for your next budget year.
Okay.
I mean, that's part of this discussion is if you wanted to go forward with looking at urban renewal, then I think you would have a budget line item for doing the studies. Because again, it is the city council that does the plans.
Okay.
But just, just looking at some of the things that urban renewals do, you know, we, we have the life safety, fire safety grant that the city created. That's something an urban renewal authority could do. You know, assembling land for redevelopment, that's something the city, the urban renewal authority could do that the city is currently doing. Facade improvement grants, again, that's something that could be generated and you can fund that through the increment dollars rather than the general fund dollars. So these are, these are all things that an urban renewal should be doing and, and could be stepping in to, to do on behalf of the city.
I do have to throw one other thing out that I, I say, in all seriousness, although I know it's a huge issue here kind of jokingly, and that is if the city council acts as the urban renewal authority, the mayor has a vote.
Whoa.
Look who's going to run for reelection.
So the, so the urban renewal authority, if it's the city council, would be eight plus three. And so in that context for urban renewal, the mayor does have a vote.
Good, what we see here is that for my business, I see assessments, reassessments not done on a regular basis. Are we on camera? But, so what happens, it may take a long time just to determine that you've had an incremental increase, maybe four years, because I don't think it's mandatory that our assessor does it, maybe five years maybe.
So one of the more recent tools that urban renewal authorities are utilizing and that assessors are required to follow is something called the Assessor's Reference Library. And so there is, assessors have a book that is put out by the Division of Property Taxation that tells them how to assess property. There is a separate chapter on, entirely on, here's how you do increment. And so there are categories of improvements that assessors have to consider to determine whether increment exists. And the only way this works is for the city and the county to work cooperatively at the front end. And so I will give the city of Wheat Ridge as an example. The city of Wheat Ridge has a report that they generate of all the building permits in the urban renewal area. They send it specifically to the assessor. So the assessor knows that these are the building permits that create increment. One of the items that creates increment is the construction of infrastructure. Because if you have vacant property that doesn't have water and sewer, it's worth X. If water and sewer is added and it's, you know, construction ready, that has a higher value. But putting water and sewer infrastructure in doesn't require a building permit. So how would the assessor know that that property has changed? So you create mechanisms to report to the assessor on things that have happened to property that are increased. They are required, you'll, you get a new assessment every two years. Whether they actually go out and appraise it is up to the assessor in terms of how they determine the, the value every two years. But our obligation is to make sure that they know the attributes of what is creating increment. And in my experience, you try to actually include that in the agreements at the front end to say, we're going to give you all this stuff. We're going to show you exactly when we are doing processing building permits. Land use entitlements, if you have what was previously zoned as kind of low, low-level industrial and it goes to commercial and has a lot more value, we need to tell them that's happening. We need to tell them when we're approving things that are creating value. And once they do that, under the Assessor's Reference Library, they're required to charge that to increment.
And that's on a two-year period? It's a two-year period?
Yeah. Well, so the, the biennial reassessment that deals with the base, that's every two years.
Okay.
Increment is always being generated. It, it doesn't go on the two-year cycle. It goes up each year.
Each year, okay.
And that's why you have to let them know what's going on.
Okay. And that, you say that sounds like we should create, or could create an agreement with the county assessors or the commissioners or?
It, it, it depends on the county. So in most cases, the commissioners are involved in that agreement.
Sure.
Because again, the assessor gets the funding from the commissioners. But it's really a, an MOU on how, on what our obligations are to make their life easier. And, and that's one of the issues with assessors is that a lot of this information is not readily available. And if you can make their life easier and, and have some sort of, either a memorandum of understanding, sometimes you can work with the assessor, they can create a policy that you are required to follow, that gives them certain information by certain timeframes. It depends on the county.
Okay.
You talked about blight studies. How much do those cost on average, do you know?
It, it's going to depend on the size of the urban renewal area. And, and so I would suggest you get bids. I've, I, I'm going to say ten to twenty thousand dollars, but they may be more. It's a lot of research, it's a lot of survey. You can, I know that Florence went through the process not too long ago. You can certainly look at what they did and how big their areas were. There are frankly, not a lot of consultants in the state of Colorado that do them. It's a, it's a small group of folks. So you can get a pretty good idea from what they've done recently.
So does, yeah, I was just going to say, does Florence have an urban renewal authority then?
Actually, Rob Brown actually helped create the urban renewal authority. Rob, do you want to say a few words about urban renewal?
Good, I didn't know that.
Good afternoon, Rob Brown, FEDC. Yes, Florence does have an urban renewal authority and it is their city council in their, in that particular case. And I believe Commissioner Bell sits on that, that group as well. And it was about a twelve thousand dollar study. And it, it's not difficult in, in our community to demonstrate blight. You know, I don't know all of the eleven off the top of my head, but one of them could be a property that was left undeveloped. So we've got plenty of those opportunities. And if you imagine a situation where you have a, you know, an empty lot or an underutilized building or something like that, and you take it from its current value, and then you make it into a commercial property that's producing income and it's reappraised, it's a significant advantage. And then you have a very large increment. And we have many, many of those situations in Fremont County and Canyon City specifically. But Florence is, is got the program in place. The challenge there is a much smaller market and being able to get momentum behind it. And there is a twenty-five-year clock that is ticking. And so what I would encourage the city of Canyon City to do, first of all, is I think it's a good idea and I'd like to see council proceed with that. And, and I recommended that when they were looking at the downtown development authority. But I would also suggest that you time it in conjunction with an effort, you know, headed by your economic development that will actually make it work so that the clocks line up, if you will. So.
So, well, we're talking about we acquired some property that was industrially zoned. So by changing, just changing that zoning.
That's right.
Could be incrementally increase the value of properties around it.
Very possibly.
And, and let me throw something else out. If, if property is owned by the government, the base is zero because it's not, so if it is government-owned and then it's sold to a private property owner, that is a disproportionately high amount of increment that's generated. That is the best possible situation for creating increment because you go from a base of zero to whatever the new value is.
Right.
So that, that's the best possible situation.
I, I'd heard that, by the way.
The other comment I think that, that is important is, is there's a lot of ways to use the money for public improvements and others, but you certainly have the opportunity to use it as an incentive to put money back into the project, to get that private sector individual an incentive to invest. Because if you imagine, you, you create the, the urban renewal authority, you, you draw the boundaries, you have to have a reason for people to, to do the work, otherwise you, you don't create the increment. So you need to think in terms of reinvesting some of that money into the, the individuals that will be, you know, stimulating that economic development. So just keep that, you know, in mind. There, there's got to be a blend certainly, especially on infrastructure, but there, there needs to be a way for it to actually have that value.
So how long has the urban renewal in Florence been running?
I believe it was formed in twenty seventeen? Does that sound right?
I don't know.
Twenty, might have been twenty sixteen. My, my, time flies, so I apologize.
And is downtown part of that urban renewal?
It is, yeah.
Okay.
And if I'm not mistaken, Florence drew a, the, the recommendation is, is to, to make the boundaries as small as possible, but I think in Florence's case, they, they basically took in the entire city limits because it has a pretty small footprint to, to start with. And strategically, that's very forward-thinking for a community of that size to take this on. So I really commend them for making that investment. And, and they have made some, you know, some nice uses. Where, where Canyon City would, would have a distinct advantage is that the, the value of that increment is financeable, right? So you can sell bonds. And, and one of the challenges that Florence has is selling bonds with a relatively, you know, small number doesn't make them as attractive as they would be in this market. And so those bonds would, would be valuable to investors. And then you can not just get the increment, but you can actually get that money upfront to make the investment now as opposed to down the road. And then the bond is actually the, you know, securing that ability to do that.
And, and I can give examples from small projects to large projects, kind of metro area-wide that, and in Colorado Springs that were urban renewal projects. I mean, Union Station is an urban renewal project. For those of you that are familiar with Wheat Ridge Cyclory, and it's kind of an iconic bicycle store in Wheat Ridge, that was a, an urban renewal project. Villa Italia in Lakewood that's now Belmar was an urban renewal project.
Old Town Arvada.
Old Town Arvada, I mean, I'm, I'm, I represent the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority. Our, Old Town Arvada is, is certainly, portions of it are a, a whole host of urban renewal projects in Old Town Arvada. I mean, there are.
Retail, housing.
Bass Pro in Colorado Springs is an urban renewal project.
Yep, that's, that's right.
Yeah. The development, as you're coming to Canyon City from I-25 on, on Nevada, is urban renewal. So it, and it can be as small as project-specific, a single building or property, and it can be, as Florence did, a larger urban renewal area and then a whole host of undertakings and activities within that area. What the statute says is the boundaries are to be drawn as small as feasible. But feasibility is really in the eye of the city council. Because if you artificially make it too small, what the statute says is that you're supposed to eliminate blight or prevent the spread, spread of blight. You want to make sure it's large enough so that you don't create. You want to make sure it's large enough so that you don't create an artificial boundary where you can't work with certain parts of the city and can with others that are blighted.
Those are public meetings. Any of you could attend the Florence Urban Renewal Authority meeting as well, so you could kind of get an idea of what goes on there before you make the decision.
So I just, I just want to say that hearing that Florence has moved forward with this and seeing their success in their downtown area in the last couple of years has really encouraged me, kind of changed my mind about it, just seeing it in action so close to home. Also, it's a little encouraging to me because I wasn't sure how some of these other special districts or the county was going to react to it. But it sounds like there's already buy-in.
No, there is. And I think Florence approached it exactly as has been recommended here, is that they approached those entities first and discussed how that would work. And this was prior to 1348, so it might have actually been 15 when this all started. What the dates are, I'm not entirely sure. But they, you know, reached out to the school district and the other, you know, 17, I think, taxing districts that they have there. And it is a win-win operation, but they, in effect, negotiated percentages and splits and all that kind of stuff. So that is clearly the best strategy is to enlist your stakeholders and supporters first.
Well, thank you for coming this evening and sharing that with us. It really encouraged me. I don't know about anybody else, but just to see it in action.
By all means.
Thank you.
Can we, then, we're kind of getting close on time, go around and I guess the old thumbs up or comments and?
Two things, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, that, my question would be, before we do that, what would be the next step? Ryan, I guess that'd be a question for you or Cory. What would, if we said, if everybody says thumbs up here, what would be our next steps?
To develop.
My suggestion would be to bring a consultant in to have a discussion with you about kind of, what I would say is a sales pitch, if you will, what I didn't want to do tonight.
The slides, bring in the slides.
Bring in the slides, exactly, the pretty pictures. And get sort of the nuts and bolts, not from the dry lawyer, but from the, someone that can talk to you about the process they do, that kind of pound what they do when they're out in the community. And then I'd actually reach out to the county before you, and the other taxing entities, before you start the process.
And who does that? Who would be the person to do that?
That is up to you, whether it's a combination of elected officials and your city administrator, but it's reaching out and saying, we're thinking about doing this and we want to talk to you about what we're looking at.
Would it be appropriate to partner with Florence to see how they?
Or FEDC?
Or FEDC, yeah.
I did.
Yeah.
You know, I brought those people together.
That, I think that would be a great avenue to start, maybe. I don't know about anybody else, but.
I like Rob's volunteerism. So, thank you. I, yeah, I figured, thank you. So the other thing, it was two things, is would the council be the authority or would you point someone like the zoning committee, which would be the authority itself, or is that too soon? Or just not there yet?
I don't think you're there yet, but I would certainly think that is something you want to think about at the front end. And consider the accountability piece that I mentioned, because again, in different communities, that can go to an entirely different answer. But it's, if the Canyon City Urban Renewal Authority is created and if it takes off, it's a lot of work. But if the urban renewal authority is the city council, you can actually make it part of your regular council meetings. So you would, you know, meet, and on your agenda, you would have, upon adjournment of the city council meeting, if the urban renewal authority had any business, you'd do it same night.
Okay.
Frank, bring your sleeping bag.
What?
I said, make sure we bring our sleeping bag.
Thank you, Frank.
Frank will wake you up when it's time to vote.
Just comments and then we'll go.
I would suggest that maybe with Rob, we get all those taxing entities together and have a quick workshop to see if collectively we're all on the same page as our very first step. Just, and then that session would also maybe help us with, what's the feeling of those people in terms of, do we do a council or a second group?
And the only reason I would suggest the sales show first is because part of the sales show can talk to you about what the increment might be generated just at a very high level from the existing mills. And I think it's a lot easier to have a discussion with the taxing entities if you know what the possibilities are. Because frankly, if you know what the possibilities are and one of the taxing districts come in and says, we won't do it unless we get 100% of the increment, you know you've got a problem.
And we'd be talking about the same format here, so we could invite the taxing entities to see the exact same presentation.
Yes.
Okay. Is that clear? Ms. Turner, would you like to start this rolling?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I think we should explore further this idea. I'm definitely against having condemnation as part of our urban renewal authority. I just think that's just not a great idea. If it can't be done cooperatively, then we won't do it, would be my position. And I think, you know, if we go forward with a sales pitch, we invite those taxing entities to be part of that meeting right at the beginning so that we all know what we're talking about. And I think then after that, we'd be looking at where we'd want to do this. And clearly, you know, our riverfront is an area where we'd like to see some new development and we're looking at zoning changes. And I think, to me, that area seems like someplace that would fit well with this plan. But, yeah, that's my opinion.
Ms. Meisner?
I pretty much second, but Caitlin has stated that, let's move forward.
Ms. Hammerick?
Yeah, yes, I think that we should take the next step. And the ideas that have been thrown out here by Caitlin sound like a real good way to kick things off.
I agree. And I agree with all that's been said, and thank you. I think we should include the Constantino's property as well because it'll have a zero basis. Ms. Smith?
Yes, I'd like to move forward and get more education. And also, maybe at that sales pitch, I'd like to have some possibilities of what kind of projects or priorities that we would be interested in doing. Because I think that'd also influence our stakeholders to know what things could benefit them, be mutually beneficial for them as well.
I'm interested in moving forward as well.
Gonzalez?
I am as well.
Dieter.
Dieter? Okay. Well, thank you all. I think we need to conclude, we're getting, pushing on the six o'clock. I would ask a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Make a motion that we adjourn our special council meeting.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that motion? Could you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Smith?
Aye.
And we're adjourned.